Good evening. This is the regular joint meeting of the Oakley City Council. Oakley City Council acting as the successor agency to the Oakley Redevelopment Agency, Oakley Public Financing Authority. This meeting is called to order at 6:30 PM. Roll call, Councilmember Fuller?
Here.
Councilmember Meadows?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Here.
And I am Mayor Shaw, present. Item 1.2 is the Pledge of Allegiance, being led by Andy... Oh, I just had it in my head. All right, hold on. Elise Andrea Ballading. All right, you want to come on up while I read your bio? Andy is a bright and bubbly 10-year-old fifth grader who's counting down the days to her 11th birthday on November 16th. She's not just smart, she's a superstar, a math whiz, a talented artist, and a volleyball enthusiast just like her older brothers in high school. As the youngest of three and the only girl, Andy brings sunshine wherever she goes. She's thoughtful, creative, and always ready to help others. She loves to draw, craft, and create magic with her hands. When she's not crafting masterpieces, she's spiking volleyballs or being the sweetest friend to little kids because she loves making them smile. Andy has a special gift for writing heartfelt messages and cards for people she loves. She's generous and finds pure joy in making others happy because their happiness makes her happy too. And if that's not impressive enough, she's super organized. Her desk and her room, always neat, every Sunday night she plans her school outfits for the entire week, and that's what we call true preparedness and responsibility. Her dreams are just as big as her heart. Andy wants to become a medical doctor or veterinarian someday, helping people and animals live their best lives. She's not just sunshine, she's a spark that makes every day brighter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Andy. We are going to move on to item 1.3, which is Proclamation Recognizing Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day. Chief Paul Beard, will you meet me at the front with your staff? Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day. Whereas the City Council recognizes that Oakley Police Department and all law enforcement agencies throughout the state depend on law enforcement records and support personnel to provide them vital services, and whereas the City Council of the City of Oakley appreciates police records assistants and police service assistants who devote countless hours performing their duties that keep law enforcement agencies running smoothly, and whereas these professionals demonstrate excellent attention to detail with quality control and effective communication with the court community that is critical to the successful completion of criminal cases. And whereas the Oakley Police Department Record Bureau personnel's dedication to accurate and efficient processing of police reports, court papers, data entry, filing, and report releases, along with positive and energetic attitude, make for a productive and pleasant workplace. And whereas, it is important to recognize California law enforcement records and support personnel for their valuable contribution to our law enforcement system. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Shannon Shaw, Mayor of the City of Oakley, along with members of the Oakley City Council, do hereby proclaim November 14th, 2025, as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day, and extend our gratitude to the Oakley Police Department Records Bureau staff and support personnel for their diligence, commitment, and dedicated service to our community.
Thank you for that. I think to some, when we see support services and records put out in social media, we often wonder, what does that really mean to a police department? And what it means is, we have spent the past three years growing our police department from the standpoint of the number of officers. And every time we add one officer, we actually add a component of work that is added to our non-sworn people. So as our workload has increased on the streets, so has the workload on our non-sworn and support people. And for that, I truly appreciate everything that they do. They are the, literally the unsung and quiet heroes behind the scenes that lets a police department provide the full services that we're able to provide a community. In our records unit, we have Yvette, Shanice, and Jennifer. They process multiple reports, documents, that our officers generate, and they interact regularly with courts of the law enforcement agencies and the District Attorney's Office. A testament to not only the hard work that they have done over this past year, but all non-sworn support people, is the fact that they have statistically seen a 9.7 increase in all of the records requests that come into their unit. And that kind of transcends to all of our non-sworn people. So basically, an increase of workload of about 10% over the past year. Our patrol PSAs are the non-sworn presence on the streets, and that is comprised of George and Candace. They take cold crime reports so that our officers can remain available and active to handle in-progress type things. And they tow cars, they address quality of life issues by focusing on parking complaints in our various neighborhoods. Our investigations PSA is vital to the investigative process because he is the one that ultimately will package the cases and deliver them to the DA's office. He also serves as our registrant officer, so anytime we have a sex registrant or an arson registrant here in Oakley, Dave, I didn't mention his name, but Dave is responsible to make sure that they are in compliance, that we're keeping tabs on that person here in Oakley, to create a safer barrier for all of our residents. Our evidence technician is Manny. Evidence can be an overcoming, very cumbersome item in a police department. Manny does a great job of keeping everything cataloged and available for processing by evidence labs and preparation for court presentation. And he keeps a retention schedule, and we have to know when to purge the stuff out of our system to make room for new things. Manny also responds out to the field to actively collect evidence and fingerprints, that sort of thing. Jim is our fleet PSA, and our fleet PSA is responsible for creating the... Helping to create the fleet that we currently have, not only in the police department, but citywide. And speaking from a police chief's perspective, we have one of the most current and refreshed fleets in the county. So for that, I'm very appreciative. And Jim does other things, like making sure the equipment of those vehicles is all in check and in operating order. And all of these people are ultimately managed by Lieutenant Cartwright. And so Lieutenant Cartwright, I appreciate everything you do to run a tight ship, so thank you. And that was a long way of saying thank you. Thank you.
Item 1.4 has been rescheduled to our December 9th meeting, and that is our update from the Oakley Library Manager, Lisa Kunalumis. So we will move on to item 2, which is Public Comments. At this time, the public comments will be heard for items not on the agenda. I do have online comments submitted indicating they wish to speak. If you would like to speak, please complete a blue speaker card located in the lobby and submit it to the city clerk. The time limit to speak is three minutes. The time limit is monitored by the timer located in front of the mayor's seat. When one minute remains on the timer, it will beep once as a reminder to complete your comment before your time expires. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, or other outbursts so that everyone may have an opportunity to be heard. Note that due to provisions of state law, the council may not engage in dialogue regarding comments. However, staff may be directed to respond to persons making public comments. And I do have Beth Mounts.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm going to read tonight. I have three items. First, a huge thank you to our voters. That turnout on November 4th was outstanding. I was an election worker. It was a steady stream from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. It was marvelous. It didn't just make noise. Voters made change. If only everyone who talks about leadership followed your example, these meetings would end on time. Next, I have to thank Police Chief Beard for the increased presence on Laurel Road. It is splendiferous. I drive that road four days a week, four times a day. Your team's responsiveness is a reminder that action speaks louder than rhetoric. Now about that last city council meeting that I stayed for. We have a mayor who had to gavel this into recess? Seriously, George? Really? Why? Are you that insecure? Do you need that kind of attention? It was disgusting. I've seen less drama, and I have horses that have better manners, much better manners. And all I have to do is look at them. It's remarkable how one person can turn a public meeting into a circus without even really needing a crowd. Let's be honest, public service isn't performance art. The people of Oakley deserve grown-up governance, not an Oval Office impression up in Washington DC. Leadership isn't about who talks the loudest or who talks the most. It is about who listens, who collaborates, and who gets things done, George. So here's my hope: fewer tantrums, more teamwork, less spotlight-seeking, more service. And maybe, just maybe, we can get through an agenda without needing a halftime show. Thank you all.
Thank you. I do not have any additional speaker cards, so I will close public comment, and I will bring it to item number three, which is Councilmember Comments. Please remember, Councilmembers, that you also have three minutes to speak, which will be regulated by the timer. Are there any Councilmembers that have comments? Councilmember Fuller?
Well, yes, Ms. Vons, really, you... Mounts? Yes, yes. If, well, I'm speaking now, you've spoken before, okay? So I'm going to speak now, and at a break, you have an opportunity to meet with the four and let them know you really want that report put out to show just how terrible I am. Tell them you really want to be able to have the community read what a terrible person that I am. Just that, let them know about that, let them go, okay? I would like to say that I was very impressed with Studio 55 during lunch, last time I was there. Excellent presentation. They had a person there who is emphasizing the needs for a power of attorney, maybe Ms. Vons may want one, in case of the elderly getting sick and needing somebody to help them. They will be honored, they have a person coming to assist them free of charge to get a power of attorney. Charlo Buckman was there, our representative in aging. She had an excellent presentation on mobility availability for individuals with disabilities and the elderly. So I wanted to commend them for that. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, we will close Councilmember Comments, and we will move to the consent calendar. I do not have any public comment cards submitted for the consent calendar at this time. Are there any items the council would like to pull? All right, seeing, hearing no others, do I have a motion for the remainder?
Move the remainder.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar minus 4.1 and 4.5. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 4.1, Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, again, I do not see our minutes as open as they should be, as detailed as they should be. Councilmember Meadows is going to respond that I voted for the type of minutes that are there back in 2022, three years ago. I said I would try it out. It hasn't worked for me. But apparently, Councilmember Meadows thinks we do not change. I have talked to our city manager about it, and he's happy the way it is, and he's got four votes, so that's the way it's going to be. But for me, until we can get up here and put out detailed minutes, I will vote no.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes, I'll again read Resolution 4822. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oakley that minutes for its meetings are hereby adopted as action minutes. Should meeting video, audio, and audio be unavailable for any meeting, lengthy summary minutes shall be provided. And meeting video and audio shall be made available on YouTube, which offers closed captioning and a transcript for the meeting, video, and audio. This was passed on May 10th, 2022, with five yeses, including Councilmember Fuller. I move approval of item 4.1.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to move item 4.1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes 4.1. Item 4.5, Councilmember Fuller?
Yes. Yes, this is a Danova project, right? If I remember correctly. My, I just had a couple of questions, or actually one, in looking at the attachment 5, the Village 6 final map. I was looking through it, and I see 3 of 6, 3 of 8, 3 of 8. I see the lots, they're right there, these ciphers. And we have Lake Tahoe Drive going through. It looks like an interesting development, I'm glad to see it's right by the fire station there. Then we come down to the next page, 4 of 8. And there are smaller lots that are going to be developed there. Then you go down to, the next one is 5 of 8. And you have Lake Tahoe Drive, Mendocino Way, Fallen Leaf Lane, and much larger lots in that location. And then going down a little bit further into page 6 of 8, we have moderate size along Mancinida Circle and Del Valle Street. So, and there seem to be some in between. So could someone give me an idea of why the smaller lots, why the bigger lots, and why the in-between lots in the whole development?
This is a final map to reflect the approved tentative map. So this is the instrument that creates the parcels. And this is as proposed on the tentative map that was approved by the City Council. So this just reflects essentially what was already approved, but memorializes the lots so that they can be sold.
What about the price ranges between the largest ones and the smallest ones?
I have no idea.
Well, are the smaller ones deeded affordable housing, or is that the intent? Or are they all no affordable housing and lots?
Councilmember Fuller, that's not an item for council consideration at this time. This is simply the finaling, this is actually just a subdivision improvement.
Actually, Mr. Coe, I don't know how to say it, but if you want me to vote knowledgeably, I'd like to know what the price range is in there.
The price range has nothing to do with your vote. So if you're relying on price range to make a vote on this item, you are relying on factors that are not appropriate for consideration.
Well, I did ask about deeded affordability.
And that's not appropriate for consideration. This is a subdivision improvement agreement. This is not the approval of a tentative map.
Danova can just throw what they want up there. No need to worry about affordable housing. I'm staying on this one.
I move approval of item 4.5.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 4.5. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Passes with four ayes and one abstention. All right, item 5, Public Hearings, we have none. Item 6, Regular Calendar, we have none. We will move on to 7.1A, City Manager Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Short report, and then I'm going to defer the rest of my time for the pavement management program update. We just wanted to highlight that our tree lighting ceremony will be held on December 4th, starting at 4:30 PM here at Civic Center Plaza. We have attached the October business license update for you all as part of the agenda. And as I mentioned, the rest of my time, I'll defer, we're going to bring up the program, our project manager, Mustafa Nakahi. And he is going to give an update on the pavement management program that we have here. So, Mustafa, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and the council, for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Mustafa Nakahi, project manager at Public Work and Engineering. So tonight, I would like to talk about pavement management program that we have in the City of Oakley. Next slide.
Give us one second, we're just adjusting the volume.
Okay, I can talk louder.
You can pull it a little closer. Yep, it moves.
Is it good?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. All right, so tonight, I would like to talk about pavement management program. So to start with, I start with an overview of pavement management condition. Talk about pavement management process, what does it mean to have a pavement management process in place? Also, we talk about payment condition survey, how the payment conditions are assessed throughout the city, and some of our current resurfacing projects and our future paving projects. And finally, I would conclude my presentation with analysis and predicting the future. What would it look like in future, in the next five years? So, speaking of pavement conditions, usually pavements are assessed by a payment condition index or PCI score. The score is from 0 to 100, with 0 representing a failed pavement. And 100 is a brand-new pavement. So anything in between kind of represents the pavement conditions. To get the PCI score, we need to calculate three quantities, three metrics. Distress quantities, you can think about as how much cracking we have, how many potholes we have in the surface of the pavements. Distress severity, how severe those distresses and cracks are, and the type of those distresses. So considering all of those metricses, we calculate a PCI score. So again, it's a score from 0 to 100. Another terminology I would like to define here is the backlog. Backlog, any segment, any block within the city with a PCI of less than 40 is considered a backlog, meaning it's very expensive to repair those segments. So, moving on, this pie chart represents the City of Oakley PCI categories. You can see about 4% of the city is in very poor category, PCI between 0 to 25. About 11% are in poor categories. And also, on the other hand, you can see about 16% of the network is in excellent condition, almost like brand-new, 16% of the entire network. To give you some kind of benchmark, the overall PCI score, kind of the average for the entire city, is 61. The national average for the PCI is 65. So we are still within the good category. It's 61 is considered a good PCI, but we are still below the national average. The backlog, which is the PCI below 40, is about 15% or 16%. So we are higher than the national average. National average is 9%. That means we need to spend more resources into our infrastructure, into our roads, to kind of keep up with the deterioration of the pavements. The good news is, the number of our excellent roads is 16%. Usually, it's recommended to have a number of excellent roads to be at least more than 15%, which we meet that criteria. Also, another benchmark is, if you want to compare our streets with Brentwood, we are, in terms of PCI, we are below, they have a better PCI score than us. And Aniak is kind of have a lower PCI compared to us. So, speaking of pavement management process, the pavement management process is a way of optimizing a limited funding. Obviously, we don't have the entire money of the world to go fix every road, so we have to optimize our budget so that we get the best return on investment. Usually, it's more expensive to let the roads deteriorate and then reconstruct them. At that point, it's considered broken. Instead, it's more costly, it's more cost-effective to prevent them from deterioration. And that's the idea of preventive maintenance. So, moving on, and also pavement management, I would like to say that this is a cycle where we start with the city strategic plans, objectives, and goals. Then we assess the pavement condition, how we look at the pavements and their conditions. And then we evaluate our objectives, whether we are getting the return on our investments, do we need to adjust our priorities and our rehabilitation activities, and then check that again with our objectives and the strategic plans. And this cycle will continue on and on and forever. So, to do the pavement condition surveys, usually consultants comes in with their equipments, and they scan the surface of the road. So you can imagine every single, every millimeter of cracks, every pothole, every rotting, every distress that we'll see will be scanned through the system. These are the 3D scanners that scan the surface. You can see the picture of the cracks that they can capture. Once we capture all of these distresses, then we convert that into the PCI scores that I mentioned earlier. So every block, every segment, every road gets a PCI score. Once that process is done, we usually do that on biannually. So every two years, we like to send those equipments, collect the data, and see what our PCI score is. So every two years we like to send, um, those equipments, collect the data and see what our P C I score is. So kind of moving on and changing gears and talking about our current paving projects. First one is Sellers Avenue. A good news is that Sellers Avenue is going to be open this Saturday. Um, you can see some pictures of our reconstruction. This is an F D R project where we actually on the base course to provide us, uh, a more stronger foundation. We actually mixed in, uh, cement with the materials to, to create a very stable foundation. And you can see some of the pictures and this is slide. Next one is California Down Neighborhood, which we perform, uh, preventive maintenance. Speaking of, it is more costly to, 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 uh, do a preventive maintenance than let the, the roads deteriorate. This is the slurry seal is one of those activities that is very costly because it prevents the roads from deterioration. And in December, it is scheduled that Harvest Court Neighborhood receive a two inch, uh, two or three inch Milan overlay, um, coming up in December. Uh, moving on and talking about the future paving, uh, projects. Um, so there are three, three neighborhoods that will receive paving in the investment. How, uh, what the P C I score would look like in the near future with the amount of funding level that we have. So the first one is, you can see on the Y axis, the average P C I. This is the P C I for the entire network, for the entire city of Oakley on the Y axis. And on the X axis, you can see the years. So you can see that the X axis started twenty twenty-five all the way to twenty thirty. So we kind of predict the next five years based on the historical data that we have. So, uh, to give you an example, you can see the first one, the first graph, the black series, it's, it's called do nothing. What if we don't spend any money, any funding on our resources? You can see the P C I drops from about sixty-one to about fifty-one, about a ten point drop in our P C I if we were, if we not spend any funding. On the other hand, you can see the green series where it's the, um, city of Oakley funding to about two million dollar a year. You can see that buys us about one point P C I for the next five years. So we'll see a, a one point increase, uh, a little bit better than what we are in the next five years. Um, however, we also run multiple, uh, other scenarios. For example, if you want to get to a P C I, uh, seventy or seventy-five, one, you, you can see that we need additional funding. So to get to a P C of seventy-one, we need a double amount of funding that we currently have. Um, this chart, kind of the same idea, you can see on the Y axis, the P C I, it shows exactly the same result, but on a regression line. Where you can see on the X axis, what level of funding per year buys us, uh, what P C I. For example, you can see, uh, I can't see that, but, uh, I think, uh, eighty P C I, to, uh, get P C of eighty, you can, you can check the X axis and, uh, read that. My eyesight is not good enough to see that from this far. And also we run another analysis, which is interesting. Uh, with the current two million roads on the red series are in excellent category, which is P C I eighty-five to hundred. The blue series, however, shows the future in the next five years. This is after in year twenty thirties based on the prediction. You can see the number of excellent roads actually increase over time, uh, because of the funding and because of adding new roads. So that's good, very good news for us. However, we also see very poor and poor pavements also spike up. So that means, uh, the investment we make, uh, obviously increase the, the excellent road, but also we are fighting because the roads are deteriorating over time. And therefore very poor and poor categories are increasing. So the target for the next five years in the city, the focus is kind of to focus on the very poor and poor category. Like work our way to kind of eliminate as much as we can on those categories so that, um, we, uh, we are, um, in a better shape in the next five years. Uh, as a conclusion to my presentation, currently the city of Oakley has a P C I score of sixty-one. National av, it's, it's, it's in the good category, that's a good news for us. However, the national average is sixty-five. To get to sixty-five, we need additional funding to keep up with the rate of deterioration for the roads. Also, I would like to mention that, um, the, uh, the, to achieve P C of seventy, we need, um, seventy-five, we need double the amount of funding that we have. And, um, the other cities, uh, around us, um, for example, Brentwood has a better P C I, whereas the Aniak, yeah, P C I score is a little bit lower than our P C I. Also, uh, as one of the recommendation that I would like to make is the city of Oakley maintain the pavement resurfacing every two years. So we, so that we can see over the years how our P C I scores, uh, kind of keep track of our P C I score and see whether we need additional funding, whether our funding is available, uh, is enough to keep up with the rate of deterioration. Uh, with that, uh, thank you very much. And if you have any question, I would like to, I would be happy to answer.
Councilmember Williams?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Um, do we have a map that shows where these streets are and what condition they're in?
Great question, yes, we do.
Okay. And can that be shared widely so that people can get access to it?
Uh, as far as, we do have that map in a software called Street Saber, and we have a subscription to that software. So anyone within the city of Oakley, um, can have access to that. But we, as far as I know, we don't have it like publicly available as of now.
Okay, because I'd just be curious to see that data, especially if we're, you know, if there's certain neighborhoods where they all tend to have poor, very poor, lower scores, it'd be interesting data to see. So maybe we could potentially reprioritize. And then this may be more of a question for, um, our city manager, but do we receive any state or federal funding to do any of these projects? Or can we put any of these up for grants, especially if we're leaning on like equity, if it's in neighborhoods that are, you know, lower socio-economic or anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, we receive, um, you know, a, a bunch of different pots of money to do street work. Um, you know, we, we try to do the best we can. I mean, that's why we, we prioritize through the budget process. Uh, and I think we've done better over the years to allocate more resources to street resurfacing. But as the presentation shows, uh, you know, we can always use more funding, right? So, uh, we know the roads and, and the street network here is a, uh, you know, is an important priority of the city council. Uh, so I mean, we're definitely trying to, to leverage, uh, the resources we have. Uh, we can definitely try to find, you know, other funding sources if they're available. Um, but it's also a prioritization, you know, from, uh, from the city council on down, uh, in terms of if we want to allocate more funding or not. Um, we, we have pretty much, you know, a, a set, uh, you know, number of resources, right? And it's how do we allocate those appropriately to, uh, deal with all the priorities, uh, within the city? So, uh, the short answer is yes, we do receive money, uh, and we try to prioritize that best as possible.
Okay, thank you, I think that's it for me.
Councilmember Meadows?
I believe we get some Measure J funding, so, right? So you had mentioned, uh, the Harvest, uh, area. And you, I believe you mentioned that you're going to do, we're looking at two inch overlay?
Two or three inch Milan overlay, yeah.
Does that area have Sierra Crete?
That area does have Sierra Crete, um, so, yes.
So we're going to overlay the Sierra Crete instead?
Uh, no, we are actually going to, uh, because it's a Sierra Crete, we didn't want to overlay on top of it. It's best to kind of remove that and then replace a fresh asphalt.
Okay, all right, that's what I was thinking. Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, seeing no other questions, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to item seven point two A, which is reports from council liaisons to regional committees, commissions and boards. Uh, so do we have any council members that would like to report their activity since our last meeting? Councilmember Meadows?
Last Thursday, I attended, uh, ribbon cutting for Chipotle and Starbucks. It's nice to see that center starting to open up after all these years. And then yesterday I attended the Veterans Day, uh, celebration, which is probably the most well-attended Veterans Day event I've been to. That's all.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, I attended the, uh, Veterans Day ceremony. I want to commend staff for what it was, what it, what took place. Um, in December, I believe it was two thousand twenty-four, but maybe two thousand twenty-three. But Congressman DeSoulson here, uh, mentioned that the, um, ceremonies in the area were for mil, for Memorial Day and Veterans Day were not meeting his expectations and they weren't meeting mine either. Uh, this one went much further and went, was, uh, put together well. I thought it was less of a political event for politicians here and more to an honor of the veterans that were in attendance, that came forward. Um, the talks, the speeches, I don't know, presentations, I like the word, the presentations were very appropriate, very touching. Um, we had a father of a Medal of Honor, um, person there to, to talk. Um, the bands were good. Um, I, the J R, J R O T C, um, I need to comment, they take it very seriously. Um, they were moving, they came and got the reefs and moved them over, um, and were carrying them. Uh, the young lady that was walking by me, uh, was one step close to tears. That's how much it meant to her to be able to carry in the reef for those that.
For a while, for our new executive director, so very exciting. Um, the National Heritage Area did meet a big break to review the marketing plan, um, behind everything Delta. And so surveys will be going out to communities soon, so that's important for us. The Delta, Delta Leadership Academy applications are due November twenty-first. Um, we also had an item on there to discuss the agreement with our attorney, who is provided to us by the A G's office. Um, we are anticipating that that's going to become complicated with the Delta conveyance, um, because the Attorney General's office is responsible for many agencies, some that, um, can be adversarial. Um, so we talked about our contingency plans and what we wanted to do in those situations. We had a very long discussion item to talk about the D W R certification of consistency that was presented to the Delta Stewardship Council on October seventeenth. Appeals must all be submitted by November seventeenth, and the hearings are scheduled January fourteenth through sixteenth. Um, so all the comments would be heard before that date. Um, we had multiple proposals to decide what our next steps would be. Uh, the first was to provide comments and recommendations. The second was to submit a formal appeal. The third was to do both one and two, or four, take no action. Um, the state agencies who occupy four seats on our commission are all supportive of the conveyance project. And the rest of the commission wanted further action to be taken. So we are having another meeting tomorrow, um, to go over what those actions can be. I also virtually attended the Board of Supervisor meeting where they unanimously voted to approve a declaration of emergency and are fun, we're funding SNAP cards with a budget allocation of twenty-one million. Um, that will only be a Band-Aid and is a four-week solution, and they have since clawed it back, um, but they've got the money there just in case, um, SNAP benefits run out again. I attended the Healthcare Literacy Council kickoff, um, which is advocating for, um, educating people on how to get the right care the right way and learning how to navigate the healthcare system and get it to work better. The goals of it are good healthcare outcomes, good doctor-to-patient relationships, better ambulance and emergency services. It is a pilot program to prove that this type of is understanding how to use it. Um, so there is a brand-new website that everybody can go look for, and there's going to be tons of information coming. And I think their plan is to come do lots of open houses and things like that. But rightcarerightway.org will help you look for treatment options through Contra Costa Health, Kaiser, Medi-Cal or Medicare and uninsured. Um, I also attended the Chipotle and Starbucks ribbon cutting. We're very excited, they're great new additions, they've been busy every time I drive by, so that's exciting. Um, attended the mayor's conference where we got a presentation, um, with Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which is basically a free book in the mail for children from birth, uh, to five. One in seven children today are receiving books from the Imagination Library. It partners with the five oh one C who manages the enrollment, the book ordering and the fundraising. Um, average cost is fifteen fifty per year per child. It is in forty-eight of the fifty-six counties in California, and they are just looking for a five oh one C partner in Contra Costa, um, to help kick this off because they want Contra Costa County to be part of it. And I think that is it that I went to.
All right, um, I am going to, unfortunately, it's a little bit long because I realize I haven't done my report out from the California League of Cities, which I attended, uh, on behalf of the city. Um, so I need to do that report out. It was from October eighth to October tenth. There were no votes prevented for the delegates at this conference, so that was canceled. Um, there were some presentations that I attended that I believe relate to the city and what we have going on. Um, so I'm going to mention those. The power of public transportation and shaping communities. Public transportation is more than moving people from point A to B. It's a driver of economic development, a tool for building community housing and a pathway to reversing historic patterns of displacement. Um, then I had one coordinating emergency response, what, who does what and how to prepare. So with extreme weathers and national disasters, part of life in California, these events are increasing in frequency and severity. So we had discussions about responsibilities to address resiliency challenges, funding regulations, expertise and redundancies to provide a safer future for all. Prop thirty-six implementation, navigating local challenges, as we know, Prop thirty-six, um, overwhelming was approved. And so, uh, we just had a conversation about the challenges and opportunities, uh, for the cities. Elevate, elevating mental health, mental fitness in the workplace. Um, how cities are centralizing communication to boost community engagement. Every city wants residents to show up, but with dozens of calendars, scattered events, promotions, communications, cities are overwhelmed with, uh, how to get their residents to come together. So there was a lot of discussion around that. And then some that I found of particularly interesting, uh, that I wanted to highlight, that seemed to fall in line with some of the challenges facing Oakley, was addressing the erosion of trust in local government. Public trust in government is essential for effective local governance, operations and thriving communities. While the COVID nineteen pandemic tested trust in government, recent shifts in federal policies have accelerated the erosion. Um, so we explored pillars of trust building between cities and residents, leadership practices and actionable strategies that any local leader can apply to help restore trust in government, strengthening support for local policies and programs. Next, there was strengthening local governance through trust fundamentals and effective partnerships. Uh, I mean, uh, amid increasing public skepticism and the growing influence of social media-driven narratives, the fundamentals of local governance and service delivery must remain at the forefront. Um, so focus on how local government leaders can reinforce public confidence by emphasizing the essentials, work, the essential work of governance fostering and understanding its complexities, ensuring that elected officials and staff work together to advance thoughtful, balanced decision-making over singular agendas. So we did, uh, examining what is at stake when this partnership falters, losing public trust, creating instability and undermining the very foundation of good governance. Uh, the next one I took was how council meetings are getting harder. Council meetings are more challenging than they used to be. How does a city stay focused on governing priorities and maintaining civility? It doesn't happen by accident. Effective meetings require preparation, thoughtful deliberation and commitment to process. Serving as a productive council member is a skill, one that can be learned. Practical tips and proven strategies for running smoother, more successful council meetings. After all, chaos is an option. And finally, and the one that I found to be the most interesting was governing amid rising incivility. City councils, staff and communities are finding too much of their attention diverted to disruptions, discord and even intimidation. These disruptions can be, can come from the outside or even from members of the governing body itself. Getting important goals accomplished requires alignment on the council, good teamwork with staff and civility in the public square. We talked about focus on, how to focus on how elected officials with the support of their executive staff can govern with, can govern within the rise of incivility. Um, we then had a closing session, uh, with a keynote speaker, Erin Brockovich. She talked about tools for change, including how to plan, implement and prepare for obstacles and setbacks. And also while we were there, that's. You're tapping. The tapping is distracting. Um, while we were there, I was also sworn in for another term. While we were there, I was also sworn in for another term as an at-large board member for the East Bay Division. I was told I was reappointed to the Policy Committee at the meet and greet. So I'm going to be staying on the Public Safety Policy Committee. And I was honored to see El Cerrito's own Gabe Quinto sworn in as the new president of CalCities. So that is my report out on that. And then we will go to, since the last meeting, I attended the Mega Mixer. Diane Burgess had Antioch, Oakley, Brentwood and other chambers put on. It was a very well-attended event. On November first and November eighth, we had the sign-ups for the Rotary Christmas Basket Program. I just want to put it out there to the public. The last sign-up will be this Saturday at Oakley Elementary from nine AM to one PM. And that's to pick up food baskets as well as gifts for children seventeen and under for those that are signed up for the city of Oakley, and we also serve a special island. On the third, we did have our Delta Six meeting. We did talk about a regional approach to, so that's going to be looked in a little bit further for the large animals and the rescue. We're, we're going to kind of see what they have there. On the fifth, I got to go to Team California, meet the consultants. The bus stopped in Oakley and I got to jump on that bus and talk a little bit about all the great things that Oakley has to offer, introduce the city manager and staff, and that was a pretty cool experience, so thank you for that. I also went to the Right Care Right Way Healthcare Literacy Reception, the ribbon cutting for the Chipotle and the Starbucks at the shops at Laurel Fields, the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference, Councilmember Williams already talked about the Dollywood Foundation. I caught the very tail end of Friday Night Bites on the seventh. On the tenth, I met Congressman Harder in Antioch at his meet and greet. And he is looking forward to coming out to Oakley and meeting all of the staff and the council. And then on the eleventh was our Veterans Day event. The turnout was fantastic, the weather, the weather was beautiful, the speakers were inspirational. So thank you so much to the staff for everything that went into preparing for this very special day. That evening, I did receive a call from the local press and I thought they wanted a quote from the mayor about what a beautiful event they had. But instead, I was questioned about a press release from Councilmember Fuller saying that I prohibited him from attending the event. And, and while he didn't want to put it out, I am going to because this is my place to clear my name. I also don't want to make council members a circus, but when I am called out on social media and lied about, I want to clear my name. So let me be very clear, no one was barred from attending our event on Tuesday. The city Veterans Day ceremony and luncheon were open to the public and anyone who wished to honor our veterans was welcome to attend. Councilmember Fuller was in fact present at the ceremony and out of respect for the occasion, I did not want to create a distraction or take away from the day meant to honor all of our veterans. I allowed him to remain on the stage during the ceremony, even though his name was not reserved on the seat because per a memorandum from the city attorney, he is not permitted to participate in city-sponsored events as in an official capacity. However, to the extent the events are open to the public, as this was, nothing shall prevent Councilmember Fuller from attending or participating in all aspects of the event in the same manner as anyone permitted, as any resident is allowed to attend. After the ceremony concluded, and only after the ceremony concluded, I waited for the stage to clear and I respectfully called Councilmember aside privately with Vice Mayor Henderson as my witness to remind him of the restrictions and to explain it was not appropriate to approach staff directly about seating or event logistics, given that his contact with staff has also been restricted under council direction. Unfortunately, instead of acknowledging that reminder, he chose to draw attention to himself, walked around the stage with his hands behind his back, simulating being handcuffed and repeatedly saying, "Take me to jail." This was unnecessary, it was unprofessional and it was disrespectful to the veterans and the families. And it was quite humiliating when I was just trying to do the right thing and have a private conversation. The truth is straightforward. The council has implemented lawful attorney-guided boundaries following an investigative report with sustained misconduct. Those measures were designated to protect the city staff, uphold a professional workplace and not to punish anyone for their military service or political views. Councilmember Fuller, you stated online today that I disrespected the veterans, the senior community, as well as the disabled community. And you continue to make yourself out to be a victim. You are not a victim, you are a predator. You are a predator in how you're elected position as a council member. You prey on staff through intimidation and retaliation. You belittle women because you believe you are superior to them and you target and attack residents who disagree with you from behind a keyboard so you don't have to face them directly. Your behavior is documented and it's unacceptable. And you've used your position to harm others and then try to hide behind your title when confronted with consequences. You've gotten away with this for too, for far too long. You've operated as if your title makes you untouchable. That being a council member places you above accountability and it does not. So buckle up, Councilmember Fuller, I will continue to hold you accountable. I will continue to stand up for our staff, for the integrity of this organization and for the people of Oakley.
Just to be clear, you do say that you, the council, without due process of law, are, the chance to address witnesses or to review the report, felt that you could, put out that a person, a veteran could not sit and elected official over on the stage. Thank you, because then I will release the restrictions that were imposed.
Councilmember Fuller, you had your chance to report and I took mine, thank you. We are going to end council member report outs and we are going to move on to seven point two, which is future agenda items. Are there any council members that have any future agenda items? Seeing none. Work sessions, we have none. Closed session is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section five four nine five six point nine. One potential case based on November third, twenty twenty-five, letter from legal counsel for the Bay Area News Group to the city attorney. Thank everyone, thank you everyone for joining us tonight and we will be adjourning this meeting after closed session. Thank you.